If we can get everybody a seat, we'd really like to. So if you can all squeeze up, we may be able to just give a seat to a few more people. Very much indeed, and good evening, everybody. Can I just say, it's fantastic to see so many people who've turned out on a rather unpleasant Thursday evening to take part in community activity. So never, ever, ever listen to people who tell you that community is dead and that people don't turn out for public meetings. Where there is an issue that people feel strongly about, feel passionately about, people will turn out, and that's certainly true here. My name is Barbara Roach, I'm the local Member of Parliament, and can I also start by saying how grateful we are to this church, to Christchurch, and to the Reverend Dele for once again opening their church to the local community. I was here last weekend, last Saturday, when Christchurch opened their new community church, and if people do want to use that space, please do contact the church, and we're very grateful to the Reverend Dele. Christchurch has always been a church that wants to be big players in the community, and we're very, very grateful to them again. Can I, first of all, just tell you who we welcome tonight? We've got a number of councils, we've got Judy Baxter, Quincy Prescott, Charles Agi, David Winskill, Richard Milner, Lynne Featherstone, Tony Cumberbatch from the Office of Nicky Gavron, Alan Tomkins of Hampstead Town Hall, Roland Jeffrey of Shoreditch Town Hall, Sheena Vick of the Heritage Lottery Fund, Ian Lush and Kate Graham of the Architectural Heritage Fund, Jacob O'Callaghan of the Hornsey Historical Society, we've got representative from Cash, Local Residents' Association, very active residents' association here, and representative from Crouch End Festival Chorus. We've had apologies from councillors, Meehan Dodd's and Camver, from the Assistant Chief Executive, David Hennings from Lord MacIntosh, with Delicia Keat of English Heritage, Bridget Cherry and Cordia Zidler of 21st Century Society, Baxter's, Donaldson's, Celia Watson of the Heritage Lottery Fund, from the Harringay Citizens Advice Bureau, from Malcolm Crowder of the Heritage London Trust Operations, Professor Ian Christie, and Regeneration Through Heritage, which is an initiative of the Princes Foundation. Just a little bit of housekeeping, as you see where you came in is also an exit there, and there is also an exit there at the back as well, which also gives disabled access and exit as well. The first thing I want to say as the local Member of Parliament is I do think all of us in the community owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to Crouch End for People, because since the last meeting that we held in October, a tremendous amount of work has gone on behind the scenes, and I'm really very, very grateful to them. And the fact that you've all come in such numbers is a real tribute to your work, so thank you very much indeed.[217.12][217.12](Applause) It's just after ten past eight, we're going to start with a number of speeches and contributions, we're then going to have a period for question and answer, for people to say whatever they want, so this is your meeting, and then I aim to sort of close the meeting by ten o'clock, because we think we'd have tried your patience and you'd have given a lot of your time for that. So thank you very much indeed. I hope you find the evening like the last one, enjoying and stimulating, you must have enjoyed it last time, because you've come back and you've come back in even greater numbers. So if I could ask Stephen Moore-Purgo for Crouch End for People to speak first, Stephen.[270.33][270.33](Applause)
Thank you, Barbara, and welcome to everybody yet again. For those of you who don't know us, I'm just going to make a very brief introduction as to who we are, a brief introduction about the Town Hall campaign and what's going to happen tonight. Crouch End for People, who are we? We are just a group of local residents who have been campaigning about community issues, we are non-political, and we recognise the need to work with the local council. We don't automatically accept their objectives, and in fact our entire raison d'etre is based around the recognition that we may need to try and affect the local political agenda. I'd also like to try and dispel some myths about Crouch End for People. We are neither pro-car nor anti-car, we are simply for adequate car parking facilities. We are neither pro nor anti-development, but we are particularly anti-this development if it goes ahead as a sale of flats. And we are non-exclusive, we welcome everybody to join our campaign and get involved. We started in summer 2003 when we heard rumours that the Town Hall was for sale, and we knew already that it was suffering from serious neglect, because it had been closed for a number of years, and then we started hearing rumours that there was about to be an imminent sale, or at least an imminent decision on the future of the Town Hall. As Barbara said, we've been working quite intensively behind the scenes for the last six months or so, and we think that tonight is very much a defining and a critical moment, because the future of the Town Hall, which is the centrepiece of this area, really hangs in the balance at the moment. So we have gathered you all here tonight, and thank you again for coming, to ask for your support, to support us, I should say, to turn this building into a proper community and cultural centre, focal point of Crouch End. Quite specifically, we've set up a trust, the Hornsey Town Hall Trust, and we are asking the council to enter into discussion with us about how to hand over the site to this trust, subject, of course, to our ability to provide a commercially viable plan. This matter really is quite critically urgent, we're delighted that Harringay Council agreed to defer any decisions for a period of six months, but two months have already gone, there's only four months left, and they are agreeing to listen to community proposals. We do have concerns about Harringay's ability to protect the community and its heritage. We are not convinced that their priority is the wellbeing of the residents and the community at large, and we do believe that they have other political agendas which influence their local decisions here, such as transport politics and house-building agendas. Our campaign objectives, well, many of you will remember the meeting that we held last October, and we proposed a mandate which was unanimously voted upon, which was to turn the Town Hall into a cultural and community centre, to open the car parks which are behind the Town Hall into pay-and-display car parks for public use, and to regenerate the piazza. Tonight, we're going to just outline our activities, all the work that has taken place since the last meeting, to try and demonstrate our ability to manage the site, we're going to ask the council to explain their plan to you, it's only correct, and then we're going to open the floor so we can all debate the options, and then at the end we'll just summarise the options, and we will be asking you to sign a petition later on tonight. But for the moment, I would now like to hand you over to Stephen Hoyle, many thanks.
Thanks very much, Stephen.[521.66][521.66](Applause)
Hornsey Town Hall and its site is a very large and central part of Crouch End. I want you to be in no doubt that there is a battle to be fought over the future of this complex, and it is a battle between the money men in Harringay Council and you, the community. If you do nothing, the money men will win. The battle is as important as battles that were fought a century ago to preserve open spaces in the area of Crouch End. It is not a time to sit back and do nothing. At a meeting of Harringay Council's executive on the 17th of February 2004, a report was presented which contained options for the future of the Hornsey Town Hall complex. That report was delivered by councillor Charles Agi, who is sitting here. He delivered that report because he is the member of the council executive with responsibility for Harringay's finances and property. In case you did not know it, the executive is a group of ten local councillors from the ruling Labour group who take most of the council decisions on policy. Typically, meetings of the executive are held after a private session of Labour councillors, where the entire body of Labour councillors express their views on the decisions which the executive will later formally take. It is vital for you in the community, if you wish to influence the outcome of the Hornsey Town Hall complex, to try to influence the members of that executive. Crouch End for People spoke at the open part of the session of that executive to fight against the proposals which Charles Agi was recommending to the meeting. Not a single other group in Crouch End came forward to fight against those proposals. The report which was presented to the council executive contained several recommendations. The most important of those recommendations was to seek a transfer of the Town Hall complex to a commercial developer on a long lease, meaning a 125-year lease. It is to the credit of three members of the executive at that meeting, councillors Baxter, McCandie and Suliman, that they asked questions which we feel created a genuine atmosphere of debate at that meeting, which led to a formal deferral of the decision on councillor Agi's recommendation. I'm not saying that any of those councillors actually support CEFP, I'm just grateful to them for intervening in the questioning. You will be told that no sell-off is planned for Hornsey Town Hall. Now certainly it is true that Harringay will retain the freehold of Hornsey Town Hall, but CEFP know from discussions with council officers that their model for dealing with Hornsey Town Hall is based on a plan of the London Borough of Ealing for Acton Town Hall. The London Borough of Ealing have issued a development brief for Acton Town Hall to redevelop it in a mixed-use development of residential and commercial use. I will later refer to a report issued by Donaldson's, which if you go onto the Ealing website, you can read about this development, and you may wonder whether the Donaldson's report has been a simple scissors-and-pace job. Under the proposal, the London Borough of Ealing will grant a development lease of the entire complex to the chosen developer. To the credit of the London Borough of Ealing, they have specified in their development brief that the community will require a leaseback of specified areas of the site as civic amenities. This is a requirement that somehow councillor Agi appeared to omit from his recommendations. Now, this model that you have before you on the screen allows a local council to go into a virtual partnership with a developer. A development plan is agreed according to the council's criteria, and after a period of consultation, and I believe many of you here tonight are very familiar with Harringay's listening, after a period of consultation, that development brief will become planning policy. Under this structure, which undoubtedly, I'm happy to be proved wrong, but undoubtedly will be Harringay's structure, how profitable the development turns out to be, well, depends how prices go in the property markets, but what the council will get is a price for that long lease determined towards the end of the development, which will give it a share of the development profit. You will be told that the Harringay Council will not make much money out of the development, and that is because customarily in structures of this kind, the initial payment made under the development lease is very small. The final big payment will come through a couple of years later, when all the controversy has died down, and this is out of your minds. Donaldson's, the role of Donaldson's, well, Donaldson's is a firm of charter surveyors who were appointed by the London Borough of Harringay in August 2002 to advise it on its options for the Hornsey Town Hall complex, and they have produced a development brief, and this is the kind of document I've referred to that becomes planning policy in the course of time, that is available to the public. That document is refreshingly frank and says that the council are seeking to dispose of Hornsey Town Hall and the entire adjoining complex excluding the library. Now, I gather that councillor Charles Agi has told the Hornsey and Crouch End Journal that the CEFP is misleading the public in saying that there is a proposed sell-off of the Hornsey Town Hall complex. Well, the word dispose means to transfer and cease to have ownership of, so I'm pleased to hear that the disposal to which the council has committed is not a sale, because if it's not a sale, it must be a gift, and CEFP look forward to the gift of the property to the Hornsey Town Hall Trust Company. Meanwhile, back in the Donaldson's report, back in the wonderful world of Donaldson's, their proposal is for high-density residential development on the entire rear of the Town Hall site. They say that the acceptable skyline for development at the rear of Hornsey Town Hall is four stories. They propose a level of density equivalent to the Barclay Homes development on Crouch End Hill. They note that there is a draft UDP out, that's a unitary development plan, which may allow an increase in densities of housing, and that that plan may affect the outcome of this development. Very interesting. So this is the position now, this is a four-story development in the London Borough of Harringay according to current standards of density, so that's what they're talking about. The profit which a developer can make from building residential property in Crouch End is at least twice as much as any kind of commercial development, and obviously considering more than no development at all. And that is the reason, and the only reason, why intensive residential development is appealing to Mr Agi and his friends. Now, within the Town Hall itself, there is an administrative block which Donaldson's say can be converted to commercial use, and seemingly we may have some very charming loft apartments at the back of the Town Hall, all very interesting. When you get to the civic amenities, I'll explain the plan in a minute, when you get to the civic amenities, we do have some in the Town Hall, we have a large auditorium and a rather nice council chamber, both of which English Heritage have some views on. Donaldson's don't appear to have any very specific proposals, because this is just a little bit more of a challenge for them. On the map, I'll just show you quickly, colours maybe don't come out so well, but the kind of greeny stuff, there's a block which is adjoining the Goldcrest Home site, that is intensive residential development going across the entire rear of the site. Some of you may recognise the library gardens between the library, which is not involved in this plan, and the Town Hall, you'll see that's got a little block in it, that's for residential housing by the way, but you know, they've put a few trees in there somewhere. Now, it's very possible, it's very possible that a developer could, of course, try and find some public use, which would be no doubt quite profitable, possibly, do you think it's very likely?
You'll be able, everybody will be able to say something at the end, I promise.
The proposal is across the back of the site, high-density residential development.
Please, yeah, okay, do you want to point? Sorry, we just couldn't hear that, thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, I think I can manage that, I've got it. High-density residential development there, adjoining the Goldcrest Home site, library gardens, houses, library safe, okay, administrative part of the Town Hall, loft apartments there, some nice bits of the place there, commercial there, main area, auditorium, no proposals, haven't yet figured out how a developer would deal with that. Transport assessments, absolutely no transport assessments in relation to this development, the report says the council will look preferably on proposals that seek to minimise car parking levels. In order to maximise the development profit for Harringay, Donaldson's have ignored the Mayor of London's guidance on parking standards, which are part of his plan for London. It's a good idea to ignore those standards, because it allows you to make a lot more money. Reducing car use is good for the environment, great stuff, but don't be fooled, building on the car park is just all about making money and not thinking at all how you could make a 700-seat auditorium work as a civic amenity, unless you had absolutely no intention of making it work as one. By our calculations, Harringay stand to make between three and four million pounds if the proposals are carried out in accordance with this plan. Finally, Baxter's, Baxter's are a firm of conservation consultants, they have been hired by Harringay to prepare a report, in their report they've assessed the architectural significance of the Town Hall, it really is quite significant, they have ascertained how much work it needs, really quite a lot, because it's not been looked after very well, and they've ascertained how the complex can be used. This plan functions as guidance for a developer in advising a developer on what English Heritage will tolerate. English Heritage has the power to direct local planning authorities to refuse applications for listed building consent. This property has a Grade II star listed building, only four per cent of all listed buildings in England have such a listing, so there are tricky considerations. But the role of English Heritage is simply to ensure that there is a scheme to protect the structure and fabric of the building, they have no statutory obligation, nor is it their role, to secure that buildings like this are put into community use, that is something for which you will have to fight if you want to see it happen. The outcome of the process will be that the Baxter's report, which approves high-intensity residential development on the rear of the site, absolutely surprisingly, of course, consistent with the Donaldson's plan, and permits full commercial development of the Town Hall subject to protecting the fabrics in the council chamber and the auditorium, that document, the Baxter's plan and the Donaldson's brief will become planning policy unless we stop it. Now, I'd like you to think of this, there are people, I'm sure there are people here who have fought Texaco and have fought Goldcrest successfully to stop developments, well, think about this, if Texaco was not only the developer but the planning authority, if Goldcrest was not only the developer but also the planning authority, precisely what do you think would have happened? Precisely what do you think would have happened? Well, I am told that councillor David Winskill here has attacked CEFP for trying to derail this process. We're in the house of the Lord here, aren't we, so I say hallelujah, praise the Lord, yes, we're trying to derail it, thank you.[1331.01][1331.01](Applause)
Thanks very much, Stephen, I'm now going to ask Selma Goxon to come and give us a review, Selma, thank you.[1355.40][1355.40](Applause)
Thank you, can you hear me? Yes. This site requires a great deal of ingenuity, well, ingenuity, that's us, the citizens It has been six months since our last public meeting, a great deal has happened since then. For you to support us in this next stage of the campaign, we need to put you fully in the picture. What follows is our analysis of the events of the past six months. This analysis reveals five key assumptions which underlie the council's actions. One, it will require 15 million to fix the Town Hall site. The sums required to fix the Town Hall site can only be raised by substantial residential development on the land around the Town Hall. Educational and community uses for the Town Hall will inevitably require a subsidy from the taxpayer. A trust is a poor way of managing a site. National heritage and arts funding bodies are not reliable sources of funding for projects such as the Town Hall site. Tonight, we will challenge all of these assumptions and will demonstrate viable alternatives. Who are we? Crouch End for People have formed a core steering group which has been meeting regularly since last September. We have subgroups looking at specific issues, not without help however. One of the great pleasures of this campaign has been the considerable experience of local people who have offered their support and their advice. We thank you all tonight. One such offer came from local artist Stuart Free, who has produced a painting of the Town Hall and postcards to take away this evening. We now have a body of over 2,000 local residents who are committed supporters of our campaign. Our two most recent leaflet drops went out to 8,000 homes. We have established important links with a variety of organisations who continue to inform and advise our campaign. Some of these people are here tonight, and we are grateful to them for their support. Others are listed on the screen. Particular mention should go to Ian Lush and Kate Graham of the Architectural Heritage Fund, who have been unstinting in their support and advice. Now, we have been talking to potential tenants for the Town Hall, they include theatre groups, dance companies, choirs and orchestras, bookshops, restaurants and cafes, under five play areas, older people, and the Citizens Advice Bureau, so we have a wide scope. And we have even managed to track down the architect's daughter, Jill Uren, she now lives in New Zealand, but she has sent us a message this evening, we've kept her informed of the campaign, and I'd like to read the letter that she sent us. Reg Uren was a humanist from very humble beginnings and had a passion for architecture. He worked his way to England as a stoker in the Depression of the late 1920s to learn from the masters and to make his contribution. London worked out well for him, the people liked what he had to say. His buildings related to scale and feeling, and grew away from the classical form of superficial ornamentation. People were far more important to him than iconic structures. Your Town Hall has a passion, has THE passion to become a wonderful community centre for all. Now, the council members and officers, here's a quick run-through. We have George Meehan, who is the retiring leader of the council, Charles Agi, who's with us tonight, executive member for finance, Judy Baxter, also here on the platform, executive committee member and local Labour councillor for the Hornsey Ward, and she is also head of the advisory panel on the Town Hall. Richard Milner, local Labour councillor, Hornsey Ward, co-chair of Friends of the Town Hall. David Winskill, local Lib Dem councillor for Crouch End, Ward and co-chair of Friends of the Town Hall. The council officers, David Warwick, chief executive of the council, Richard Barrett, head of property services and facilities management with responsibility for property borough-wide. David Bond, who apparently could not be with us tonight, he's project and development surveyor with the Hornsey Town Hall as his particular remit. And finally, Lorraine Sparks, who's the facilities manager for the Town Hall. Now, we come to the past bids for the Town Hall, I'll be very brief, there were three, and we've considered them in order to inform our campaign. There was the 1987 North London Theatre Trust, Mountview Theatre School and Arts Centre, that trust proposed a 10 million pound scheme to bring the Hornsey Town Hall back into use for public performance and arts training. In 1995, a bid proposed a music and cabaret venue. In 2002, revolutions films bid for the Town Hall, now that was an interesting bid, the focus of it was a new multi-screen independent cinema plus gallery, basement cabaret, cafes and bars. An annual Crouch End Film Festival was to become a major new event on the arts calendar in London. Consideration of these past bids demonstrates how the council arrives at certain assumptions about the development of the site. The first assumption, the Mountview bid assumed a cost of 10 million pounds, the council now suggests that figure has risen to 15 million, they haven't yet demonstrated to us how they've arrived at this figure, and we therefore challenge that assumption. Second, the revolution films bid included residential development on the land behind the Town Hall, this led to a second assumption, that revival of the Town Hall requires significant residential development. We also challenged that assumption. We also challenge that assumption. Thirdly, the council commissioned Donaldson's to look at options for the site. In 2003, a council officer summary of Donaldson's report state, one, there is little demand for office and retail premises, there is demand for bar and restaurant use, there is a very large demand for arts and cultural uses, some of which have commercial value, but a high proportion, and this is important, a high proportion is for education and community use that in effect requires subsidy. Now, our plans will demonstrate that a vibrant mix of activities will generate several revenue streams which will sustain this venture well into the future. Other options stated in the 2003 Donaldson report were the disposal of the town hall site, freehold or long leasehold to a commercial operator, and secondly, to advise on alternative arrangements if disposal to a commercial operator is likely to prove unsuccessful. This is where we come in. We don't want to wait until an attempt to sell it to a commercial developer has failed. We propose an alternative arrangement, hand over the site to a trust run by and for the Our parallel plan, negotiations with the council and our parallel plan as follows. Last October, we expected that the site reports by Donaldson's and Baxter's would be available within a month. However, we thought it unwise to await these reports before commencing work on our proposals. As things turned out, it was a sensible decision. We did not receive them until the end of February, only nine weeks ago. So for a time, we almost worked in the dark. We have met formally with the council on four occasions. We have urged the council to work with us and to allow us to participate in plans to restore the site. Six months down the line, and sadly, the council has not been prepared to permit this level of participation in the decision-making process. That brings me to the fourth assumption: a trust is a poor way of managing a site. In November 2003, we met with the leader of the council, George Meehan. He assured us that all options for the town hall were on the table. In that initial meeting, chief executive David Warwick shared with us his dislike of trusts based upon the expensive plan and expensive drain on council finances that is the Ali Pally Trust. However, our research categorically suggests that a well-managed trust is the ideal way to run the town hall site. Therefore, we challenge this assumption. On February 10th, we again met with councillor Meehan. The council emphasised their desire to work with a developer. At the same time, councillor Meehan informed us of their intention to set up an advisory panel. One week later, on the 17th of February, a report from the council officers Barrett and Bond was considered by the executive council. It recommended a transfer of the town hall to a commercial developer on a long lease. Also included was a recommendation to invite interested community and cultural organisations to consider how they might work in partnership with the council and a commercial partner. It came as a shock to discover that despite council assurances, there was effectively only one option on the table, a sell-off to developers. The turning point. Representatives of Crouch End for People spoke at that meeting. We were the only opposition group to do so, and we objected to the proposed sell-off. We won a deferment of any decision on the entire site until the executive meeting in September, plus a broader remit for the advisory panel to consider a wider set of possible options for the site. Now, a word about the advisory panel. At this meeting, councillor Meehan also confirmed the setup of the advisory panel. A summary of his words appears on the screen. Six months for discussion, examining recommendations in the Barrett and Bond report, looking over other options, and finally reporting back to council executive in September 2004. Now, these are the advisory panel members. I'll give you a moment to look it over. They're too long to read. You might notice that Crouch End for People has been allocated one place on the advisory Now, it was two months before the panel held its first meeting on the 21st of April. There are to be five meetings in all. The last is scheduled for the 20th of September, and then the panel will report to the executive council. Now, briefly, there are terms of reference. They stipulate any proposals will not be funded either in capital or revenue terms by the council. That means no money coming from the council for this project. There is little or no acknowledgement that the council is obliged to make good the costly dilapidation of the town hall brought about by their neglect of this heritage site. Secondly, any proposals must have a realistic chance of commencing within two years. This from a council who have failed over 30 years to maintain this heritage site. It would be so much quicker to sell it off to developers. The council wishes to avoid financial risks. However, they do not heed the risk of handing over our town hall to unaccountable developers. And thirdly, any proposals cannot depend on unidentified funding. Crouch End for People will seek to demonstrate to the advisory panel that with the right stewardship, a trust is the only way forward. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much indeed, Selma, for all that background. Just before I call the next speakers from the local authority, I just wanted to remind people, it's on all the literature, but there's actually a chance for people to see the town hall, to see what this is all about. And many of you will know the building very well. Saturday, the 8th of May, from 12 to 5, there'll be speeches at 2 o'clock. So please, please do come and reclaim our town hall. Very pleased that we have two councillors with us tonight on the platform to speak to us, councillor Charles Ajay and councillor Judy Bax, who've got a wealth of experience and knowledge. And Charles, I think you're going to speak first. Charles.
I'm pleased that there are a lot of people here tonight, and I'd like to say thank you to Crouch End for People for inviting me and my colleague councillor Bax here to come and address you this evening. Although you've heard an attack on the way in which the council has seemingly been prepared to sell off the town hall, I trust you will allow me the opportunity to try and present a more balanced viewpoint. Early next month, I think it's been said, there'll be an open day on the 8th, Saturday the 8th of May. We've arranged this open day for the public to view the interior of the town hall and give you the opportunity to give the council your views. Day has been set up as a consultation event, providing an opportunity for you to submit your views and suggestions concerning the future uses of Hornsey Town Hall. The background to the current situation, that as part of a wider accommodation strategy, we are relocating many of our staff from here to Wood Green. This is providing a rare opportunity to consider the entirety of the site and determine how we can best seek to repair the buildings and introduce alternative uses in the future. It is important to us as a council that we do as much as we can to meet community aspirations for the complex. Hornsey Town Hall is a Grade Two listed building, as has been said, and is considered an important example of modernist architecture and has an art decor interior. Many of its original features are still in place. During the course of the open day next month, you will have the opportunity to view parts of the town hall that are not usually open to the public. I suggest then you will be able to provide us with a more thoughtful response on how best to secure the future of this important building. Substantial research, again, has been demonstrated, and preparation has been carried out by the council officers prior to this open day event. Consultants engaged by the council have completed a series of studies to look at potential options for the complex, both in terms of viability and future ownership and management. In addition to the council, the council has also commissioned a conservation plan which outlines the necessary restorations and adaptations that are considered to be generally acceptable from a planning and heritage perspective. These require further consideration through the council's planning process, but have been seen by English Heritage, and I understand are considered feasible, taking into account the plans for the entire complex. The uses set out below are proposals, and I must stress their proposals, are to assist you and the council in considering all options. Now, I'll outline the possible uses. I'll stress again that these are options. We haven't yet made or reached a decision as to the future of the town hall. Possible uses of the Hornsey Town Hall complex include: public rim improvements, especially on the frontage, to create a new piazza that enhances the town hall and public halls and connects to the Broadway, which could include a small cafe within square. Restoration of the public halls to be retained primarily as a single space for performance, rehearsal, education, training and exhibition, conference and conference spaces. Retention, repair and improvement of the main areas of the town hall lobby. Committee rooms, offices, including the council chamber to provide office space, meeting rooms and conference spaces, as I said. Acceptable uses or reuses of the west wing of the town hall could be for small-scale retail uses ancillary to the public halls and all restaurants through bar. Conversion of the east wing of the town hall and redevelopment of the town hall carpark for residential use where the case for enabling development is proved. And I must emphasise that. The office annex building could be demolished. The nude studio could be separated out for sale for business or residential use. Western Park Annex, former clinic, could be incorporated into the carpark development and retained for business use. Regard to pedestrian permeability and safety in the context of the chosen options, particularly to create better links to the Broadway and the library. A viability study has shown that it is physically possible to locate a school to modern standards within this site. The way forward has been given serious and lengthy consideration. At this time, no decision has been made, and the final outcome is still open. It has been said that the council has set up an advisory panel, which councillor Bax chairs, and all stakeholders, people who feel that they have an interest or a stake in the future of the town hall are all welcome by application to councillor Bax who chairs it, and she will be saying a few words on that. However, we welcome all views, particularly yours, as I said earlier, as individual members of the public. And I will urge you to attend the open day on the 8th of May, where we will be seeking your views in what I hope will be a less charged and more considered atmosphere. Thank you.
Right, so thank you very much. Judy Bax, Judy.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to say a few things, and it's wonderful to have so many people here and to all be concentrating, I hope, on taking forward the best possible plans in the end for the Hornsey Town Hall. There are different ways of telling the history and the story of where we've got to so far, and I don't actually propose to tell the story again, but I am concerned that the council seems to be painted in a very unfavourable light, and I would say...
I promise everybody will get a chance to have their say, but if we could please hear Judy out, that'd be really helpful. Judy.
And I just want to say that, in fact, I think we've got to find a way forward where we work together on this, and that the council has responsibilities, which are the council's responsibilities, which it has to carry. And as a member of the council and as the chair of the advisory panel, Hornsey Town Hall Advisory Panel, I'm very conscious of those. So I'm very interested to hear what you're all, what we're all saying this evening. I'm very interested to see and to hear about the amount of work which the Crouch End for People have done around possible uses of the town hall and so on. And I anticipate that in the panel, we shall have to have some very, very lengthy and serious discussions about the best ways of taking things forward, because although I've heard you say things about a trust, I think there's a lot of further discussion around all of that before we get anywhere near the solution. And at the moment, the way the advisory panel has been set up is to keep it very open and to welcome all possible ways forward and all possible thoughts about how it should be used. And to me, the things which restrict us are that we have the Donaldson, the conservation report, the conservation plan, about the beauties of the town hall and what we all want to preserve, and which was beautifully portrayed, I remember, at the last meeting when we had slides of the interior of the town hall and some of the particular architectural features, which I don't think there's any disagreement about. And that I think the actual uses, that we can put the main hall, the two halls, the one underneath and the one on top, too, is probably the easiest part of it, but the fact is that somehow or other we have to find a way to pay for it. And the council has not got the money, whether it's £10 million or £15 million, it hasn't got that money to put into this, this particular project, and we're looking for ways to manage the whole thing. And that is how we're going to take it forward. If I could just go back to the terms of reference, the role of the panel is to advise the council how it may best meet community aspirations for the town hall complex. So that's what the panel is about. It's about hearing the aspirations of the local community and the wider community, because it's... and the wider community, because as those people have pointed out to me, although it's the Hornsey Town Hall, there are lots of people living further afield, not that far afield, but in North London, who will, we hope, benefit from what we can eventually create there. It's a great opportunity. Community aspirations are defined as the likely views of the community on the conservation and enhancement of the heritage and the public value of the town hall complex. The panel must work within current council planning and environmental policy. Well, clearly we do have to. The panel will not be the sole representative of community views as this will be obtained also through public consultation and the council commences to produce supplementary planning guidance. Now, that was presented as a slight threat, I fear, from some of my colleagues on the platform, but I think that this further consultation will be helpful. If there is supplementary planning guidance, then the council is obliged to go out to community consultation and to talk to people and to hear what they have to say. And we've then got this list, which you already illustrated, about the way that we can achieve what we want to achieve and the proposals for commencing in two years. Now, the panel's had its first meeting and we've looked at a work plan or a plan of dates. We're already thinking that actually we may slip the date back to October to report back to the council, because we may need that extra time to come up with our proposals and then to consult again and to have everybody knowing what our proposals are before we take them back to the council executive. But I'm sure that we shall be able to arrange what's best. But I would like to end on a spirit of cooperation and looking forward. And leaving, I mean, we know that the town hall has had three unsuccessful kind of efforts to take it forward in the past. I think if we can all work together and if we can make and if we can build on the expertise which is clearly here and the knowledge and the work that's been done, then I think we have every chance of achieving what we all want to achieve, which is something really good for Crouch End. And I'll end there and hope to answer questions.
Thanks very much indeed, Judy, and thank you very much indeed, Charles. I'm now going to ask Neer Workerson. It's Annie Miles, yeah. Annie Miles.
Now, we have heard from the council and if we knew no better, we could almost believe that our town hall is in safe hands. But history's taught us to be cautious and so we have an alternative. First, Crouch End For People created a mandate and now we have created a vision. It's a vision for the long term that offers a beautifully restored art deco 900-seater theatre, cinema and a diverse cultural and community centre for all ages and somewhere to park. We think that Haringay Council have had it long enough. They haven't cared for it. In fact, they've left us with a town hall to be ashamed of. How can we leave this community treasure in the hands of the very same council who have occupied our town hall, left it to rot and selfishly guarded its car park for the past 15 years? Well, you're right, obviously we can't. We want it back. So what is our vision? It is a vision that will work. It will work for the town hall and it will work for Crouch End. Our vision restores the 900-seater theatre, creates a cinema, creates an art gallery, creates a space for all ages, creates a European-style piazza. Our vision recognises past and future heritage, creates the revenue stream to pay for maintenance without burdening you, the local taxpayer, creates adequate parking spaces to serve our community. Our vision creates a place for everyone. This is our vision because this is our town hall and we want it back. So how does this vision work? Well, over the last six months, we've been working tirelessly to transform this vision into a reality. We intend to make part of the space a one- or two-screen cinema. To date, we have attracted three serious offers from commercial operators, all interested in opening a small independent cinema within the town hall, complemented with a bar café. We plan to refurbish the public auditorium extensively. Our town hall will be multifunctional. Its design will be ideal for theatre, dance, public meetings, Christmas events, concerts and school plays, as it always was. An internationally acclaimed dance group have expressed a strong interest. This would afford a fully-equipped rehearsal studio, which could also be shared with local groups and dance classes. In addition, we have approached a local music school that could make use of both the rehearsal space and auditorium. We plan to lease some of the space as artisan workshops that will be available to the community. There is also a proposal to include a soft play centre for small children and we're currently working on plans to involve community-based activities that will benefit all age groups. And why will this vision work? It will work because our vision celebrates the range of talent and creativity that we have right here in our very own community. We embrace the community spirit that is so alive in Crouch End. We realise the value of its prime location. We see the audience potential of such a centre. Our vision recognises community needs and offers facilities in education, voluntary organisations and charities alike. It empowers the community and gives us all a place to belong. Our vision will endure. This is our town hall and we want it back. Thank you.
The real question is, have the plans really changed? Is the council able to actually change the plan in such a way that the vision can happen? We thank again for the open day, but I would like to remind everybody the open day is there because we put immense pressure in the executive meeting to receive that open day. Without us, there would not be any open day. I also would like to say that we all recognise quite clearly that without working together with the council, nothing is going to happen here. And I urge everybody to understand that we're trying to work here together with the council and not against it. I want to come back to the advisory panel and I want to examine some of the core issues that were raised with Zermatt's speech earlier. Our concerns with the advisory panel is that the term of reference, limitability of the panel to examine the maximisation of community and cultural usage of this site. We are concerned that these terms of reference will lead inevitably to the sale of this site to a commercial developer. The council, as far as we can see, sits in a vicious circle. The council needs to maximize profits. The council will not put tax money to this town hall and in effect, this forces immediately a commercial development that will have to take place in order to raise any kind of money. That means that it is impossible to raise funds for this kind of activities. You cannot raise funds if it's a commercial activity. It means that you need to raise luxury flats, business centres, where the car park is. It means that it prohibits any kind of serious cultural and community usage in the town hall and the town hall inevitably becomes a conference centre. There is, of course, another way to look at it and the other way to look at it is to raise a virtuous circle instead of a vicious circle. If we start from a different point of view, if we start by concentrating on a genuine community and cultural centre, if we start by taking the vision of how to turn the place into this kind of place first, it, of course, allows us to go and speak to all those organisations that we mentioned before and to enable us to raise funds for this development. What it means, it means that the need for commercial development is limited. The amount of money that needs to be raised is much, much, much smaller. And it allows, therefore, for an exciting centre to turn up. It all depends, I think, on where we try to go to. I think the conversation that Alice had with the cat, would you like to tell me, please, which way out to go from here? Said Alice to the cat. I think that depends a great deal of where we actually want to get to, is what the cat said back to Alice. Dropping slowly here. These are the five assumptions that we raised before and they, of course, form this vicious circle. The money, the £50 million, comes because of the assumptions that are placed there. Not because this is the sum of money that's actually required. And they, of course, create this... Because the cultural and community uses forces the council to think in terms of the need to raise subsidies and they will not do that, it means that the required funds can only be raised by some huge residential development, which rules out national heritage and art funding bodies. And, of course, that means the trust is therefore a very poor way of managing this site because it tries to do something completely different. £50 million to fix the town hall, we don't understand that figure at all, unless it includes all sorts of things which have nothing to do with the town hall, unless it includes, of course, the cost of actually building the flats, unless it includes the cost of developing the car park, developing the library gardens, creating the business offices and I don't know how much it actually is to fix it. Actually, we do know, we'll let you know in a minute. We are also very, very concerned with the fact that we've... The figure of, Stephen talked about £3, £4 million. We've heard in the meeting the figure of £2, £3 million as a moderate return to the council from the sale of the complex. I wonder if that's part of the £50 million as well? The actual costs, maybe it isn't, I don't know. The actual costs, we've taken a huge exercise over the last few weeks. Unlike the council, which every time there's any question of numbers, it's commercially sensitive. Our numbers are not commercially sensitive. Some of the names are commercially sensitive. There's a document, sorry, there's a document that will be distributed if the printer finishes on time today, which everybody is available to get. It's extremely detailed development brief. It's got a lot, a lot of numbers in it and it will indicate the amount of work that went into this. We can't see how it costs more than £5 million to change the town hall to the vision that Annie has specified. To just fix the town hall, just put a coat of paint and stop the leak on the piano and to make sure the building is actually sound is £1.2 million. I don't think this is a subsidy from the taxpayers towards the town hall. I think this is some money owed to the town hall. As you can imagine, we're not dependent on that sum of money in our plans. What it does mean, however, is that some development, some cross-subsidy, I think, is the key word in the council, will have to take place. But what we can promise you now is that we've worked very hard to keep it to an extreme minimum and we'll show you in great detail what we think is absolutely necessary. There will have to be some low-intensity housing in Hotherley Gardens. There's going to be some retail units in the Muse. And there is a, I don't know if you know that building there that's photographed? That's a temporary building that sits at the back of the site, in the middle of the car park. This can probably go down to raise some commercial space at the back, artisan workshops. I'll show you the picture in a minute. By raising all this development, we are reassured we can raise £3 million that if they don't go to the council, can go into the town hall. I want to show you this picture. There's a grand picture of that, where's Andrew, which I'd like to thank specifically for this huge effort of his over there. We can unveil it later on. It's a very detailed plan. I know. Now this works? Sorry. Can I carry on? What you can see is happening on this plan is... I don't know if people normally see this bit here, which is the front of the hall. It's very difficult to see this huge town hall there at the back and I think this kind of drawing actually gives a nice perspective of what actually goes on there at the back. And this is the car park, which there is being developed with trees on it. This, we envisage is a soft play area. This, next to the library, this is the library here, sits next to other residential, so we think this is low-intensity residential is appropriate. This is the KAB offices at Hotherley Gardens, which can be developed because they sit in flats and this is where the toilet is at the moment. We envisage some retail development over here and unfortunately, without the £1.2 million, we'll also have to develop this bit here, which is at the back of the development, the Goldcrest development and that's the way to raise £3 million. What that does allow is, of course, the car park to stay completely intact, the entire town hall completely intact, without any particular need to turn into a conference centre. Just to show you the summary financial now, it looks like it's a bag of cigarette pack, I know, but this is just in order to be clear about the numbers. As I said before, the full numbers are broken down here in about 20 pages of numbers. The cost of development is about £5 million. The funding required from outside funding source, about £2 million if we accept £3 million as a match funding through the cross-subsidy of developing the low-intensity residential development. The entire vision, as Annie has deployed, has been costed out quite in detail. We envisage an income revenue of about £3,000 per year from E1. This, to me, looks like an extremely viable commercial proposition. Of course, what we have to do is to raise funds. We obviously do not accept that national heritage is not... and art funding bodies are not reliable. We think they are extremely reliable and we know that the council has never actually approached them and tried to negotiate on how to raise funds. It's not such a huge amount. I think working together, if the council works with us, if the bodies work with us, if we allow to join the council advisor bodies, surely the Americans put a man on the moon, we can raise that money to develop this town hall. And finally, the trust. As Zermatt said, our research shows that there's enough town halls that work on a trust basis. It could work if everybody agrees to the goals. It could work if we agree that the commercials are feasible. We've set it up. We invite everybody to join this so long as we agree to those objectives and that vision. And I think that this is a very straightforward call and I think my last charter is to say that what we'd like to do today, again and again and again, is ask Haringay Council to work cooperatively with us to hand over the site, the Hornsey Town Hall, for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very, very much, Neer. As I said right at the beginning, since October, a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes has gone into this. You will be able to see all the figures that have been prepared and that, you know, we will try and get that out as quickly as possible. But now I want to open the floor to people here. What I will try and do is to take sort of sets of questions in three so if people could start putting their hand up. And Armet, or Bobby, is there with the microphone. First of all, I'm going to ask, first of three, Lyn Featherstone is going to talk about transport. I'm going to go here in front and then just there, lady there behind with her hand up and then we'll, you know, we'll keep on going round. So Armet, just over there, please, first of all, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I really hope that the synergy, the energy in this room is listened to by the council and that if it is funded, if the funding streams that you're talking about tonight are possible, that they are taken seriously. Because I think only working together and taking on board the wishes of the community is going to succeed in this. But I'm going to go on to my specialist subject, which is Chair of Transport at the London... But I'm going to go on to my specialist subject, which is Chair of Transport at the London Assembly. I think transport is absolutely key here. Even if the car park isn't developed, I very much have the view that form follows function and if the wonderful vision of a 700 theatre and a couple of cinemas is realised, that the numbers and the impact studies of transport are done very carefully, because the numbers you're going to attract to Crouch End will be huge. And for all of the people in this room, as much as we want everything that's in the vision, you also don't want life entirely stuffed up by a thousand cars arriving at the same time every night in the middle of the peak hour traffic jam. So the areas where I think I can be of help to you, to all of you and all sides in this, is in terms of travel planning, which is very, very important, obviously increased capacity in public transport, but also about getting hands safely at night. I'm very keen to see that this sort of thing designed in from the very beginning in terms of thought, so there's a safe place for people to wait while waiting for someone to pick them up or a taxi or whatever, or public transport, and that is all considered at the very beginning. But I cannot impress on you, in the sort of world we live in now, with the difficulties that we have with transport, whether by car or by public transport, this has to be designed in and lobbied for at a very early stage, because increases in bus capacity, as the mayor's a bit short of money at the moment, are becoming a little more difficult than they were a couple of years ago. Thank you.
I want to refer to what Charles Agi said about the open day. I'm really surprised to hear that it's a consultation day on the 8th of May. As far as I can remember, and I believe the councillor, Agi, was not here in our previous meeting in October, it was one of our demands to have an open day. It took seven months for the council to agree for an open day. I believe people here know about the open day because our leaflets, not because the council put any leaflets around. I believe we're organising a party and maybe councillor Agi will be so kind as to help us get a licence for it, which the council is saying we shall get one day before the event, where we need to book stages, pay for people and they're just taking us for a ride. Thank you.
Thanks very much. What I do after a while, we'll come back with, to the panel, so if there are specific questions, we can answer them, but I really want to hear your voice for a moment. Thanks Amit.
Yeah, Jane Forbes Green Party. I just think it's fantastic to have all these sort of community facilities going to be available, but it does worry me a little bit about having a 900 seater theatre, which I think is what he said. I really want to follow on what Lynne was saying, just about the issues of having a large car park and attracting lots and lots of cars to the area. I really think if it is supposed to be a community facility, then we should be looking at a smaller scale and that we should not be trying to encourage cars, that we want to be actually, all of us walking and cycling and busing and public transport, as Lynne was saying. So I'd really like to think that one through a little bit more, because let's be honest, if the council was proposing to have a large facility which would attract lots of cars, we would all be sitting here trying to fight that and we would not want lots of cars being attracted to our area. So I really don't, I would like to see another thought for that car park and that we shouldn't really be having a large car park at the back of it. Thank you.
We'll come back. Thanks very much. I'm going to go back, anybody back there? Yes, Sally here. Sally, gentleman here.
Right. My name's Sally Billot and I'm a member of the advisory panel. Reason I'm on the advisory panel is I was, well, I'm a former councillor, I was a councillor till two years ago and I'm obviously very familiar with the two previous attempts to get what I think is a wonderful building back into public use.
Thank you very much. My name's Paul Loach. I too used to be a councillor, but please don't hold that against me. This question of trust is the one that intrigues me most. It's absolutely certain in my mind, as Neer has said, that the chances of getting a successful conclusion to this is much diminished unless both the council and the people in this room and others who couldn't attend tonight work together. So I'm addressing these next set of comments to the councillors, because they have said they've got a very open mind. Crouch End for People clearly can't afford an open mind, they're campaigning to stop the open mind going down the wrong way. So here's what I want to say. If there's such an open mind, why did I naturally assume that when the council decided to postpone the decision for six months, it took them conveniently over an election period and potentially robs this as an election issue? Now I'm sitting there thinking, am I wrong about this? Okay, maybe I am. So let's look at the composition of the advisory panel and see what sort of trust we can put in it. How many councillors are there? How many are from the ruling Labour Group or those sympathetic with the ruling Labour Group's plans? Why, with all these people here, as Crouch End for People only got one representative? Why? Why has the Friends of Hornsey Town Hall got so many representatives? Why is this a complete, well, when it went up there, there was about seven or eight from Friends of Hornsey Town Hall and there was only one from Crouch End for People and I find that very disturbing indeed, because a number of those were councillors. Now, I'm into this open game and let's go for it, but let's rebalance that advisory panel first of all, and I would strongly urge the council, and this is nothing against Judy Bax as a person, I don't know her and I trust her as a local politician, but I think we should have a non-aligned chairman for that particular advisory panel, who hasn't got an active run. I would also like to say this, there's a lot of chat about cars and coming at the wrong time and I think what Lynne Featherstone has to say clearly has to be taken on board and why not take an expert's help? But if there's going to be high density housing in that area, I doubt very much if there come cars. There was something else I was going to say, but why hog the whole evening?
Thanks Bill. Lady here.
So you've already said it for me. I'm not a councillor or a former councillor, I'm a longstanding Crouch End resident. Yes, you said it for me. I was going to say that people were talking about the increased volume of traffic with the vision and completely ignoring, you know, the amount of traffic that would be brought into Crouch End by the residential and commercial development, absolutely huge amount, so I wanted to make that point, which you did for me, so thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Amit, there's a gentleman just over there with his hand up and there was just a gentleman here, so who's second? Okay, gentleman there first of all, please, Amit, thank you.
Name's Adrian Strabasky, ours. The campaign to save Stationers Park from the redevelopment for school. Well, we were told at the time that school facilities were needed in Crouch End, which is quite true, they are needed. So are the people who are going to live in the high density houses that are going, or high density residential development in the back of the town hall, are they going to be banned from having children or sending children to local schools? Because there are no local school, or there's no extra places in the local schools. The expansion of Western Park School, which was going to involve the redevelopment of Stationers Park, although we came up with suggestions, including the surgery at the back of the town hall, nothing further has been done by Haringey Council to identify these sites. So apparently, is the specification on this development going to be people that are not allowed to have children? Maybe not even required medical facilities, because that'll make them really saleable.
Thanks very much. Gentleman here and then lady there, oh, it's, yeah.
Hello, my name's Sean, I'm not a member of any party, I'm a member of Crouch End for People, I'm pleased to be. I didn't want to make any comments, I just wanted to ask a question. Given, and that is basically the £10 million or £15 million assumption for what it would cost to refurbish the town hall, could I ask or challenge the councillors to give some explanation of that? And bearing in mind that to say that this is commercially sensitive information will give a very clear message to everybody about the level of cooperation that can be expected from the council.
Thank you. Just have a question from over there and then we'll come back to the panel very, very briefly, just to answer some of the points that have been raised and then of course we'll go back to the floor again.
Hello, I'm Lauren Harvey. I'm wondering really whether the problem is a bit more deep seated, in that Haringey Council seems to want to look at this area as an area where the council taxes can be collected and the east of the borough as an area where the council taxes can be spent. And I would quite like to know what would happen to the money that was raised by this development for Haringey Council. Where would that money be spent? Would it be spent on Crouch End, on schools in Crouch End, on health facilities here? Or would that money be earmarked for the east of the borough? I'm beginning to wonder whether it's time to secede. Let's go back to Honsey and Crouch End and Wood Green. Originally, when the two, when the three boroughs came together, this was an area of declining population. The station of school was closed because they had too many school places and now that's certainly not the case. I mean, we're, you know, it's the only part, I think, of the borough that is growing as substantially as it is. Just a light thought, but it's, you know, it's an idea. Thank you.
Thank you Lauren. I'm just going to, just going back to the panel. Neer, I know you wanted to answer something on car parking and then Charles or Judy, if you want to come back to those questions that were asked directly of the council.
Just very quickly on the car park. We are not in love with cars in any sort of way and the cars are obviously a big, much bigger issue. This is nothing to do with cars. If the car park gets developed and you put flats on the car park, this town hall cannot exist as a town hall as a community centre, I think it's that simple.
Somebody said, why is that? Why is that? Somebody said, why is that?
Because if there's no car park facilities, you can't operate a cinema, you can't operate a theatre, you can't get people coming from anywhere. There was a big speech just a minute ago and Judy Bax has well mentioned the fact this is not a Crouch End thing, it's a big thing to serve a wider community. If there's no car park, the only people that can use it are going to be people who can walk down to the town hall, it's not going to be a cinema operation, it's not going to be any cafe operation, it's going to be basically a conference centre.
Okay, what we'll do is, if I can ask the council to come back on that and then I'll call some people who want to raise those issues as well, if that's all right. Just keep on putting your hands up. Charles or Judy, who was it?
Just coming in on the car park. Is this on? Is this on? Yes. On the car park, it seems to me we can have hugely long arguments and the whole thing doesn't have to be a car park. We probably do need some car parking area and I take the remark, the green remark, that we don't want to have the whole of Crouch End blocked with a thousand cars every evening when the people are coming to the theatre. So, you know, I think we have to retain an open mind on that, that there'll probably be some car parking facility, but how to provide it without taking up the whole area or how much car park is seen the most sensible is yet to be determined.
Thanks very much. Can I go back to the floor again? I know people were very anxious to talk about, to talk about the car park. Yep, lady sitting down there, gentleman there, we'll get you the...
One quick question, which she didn't answer, which was that guy's question there and that is, are the books open to the public?
Right, we'll do that, right.
From Haringey, can we just not have any more things from the flock? Can they just answer the question?
Yeah, we can, I was going to say that. Thank you for reminding us. Charles, did you want to answer that question? Thank you for reminding us.
Books, the books are open and I think they are available, they've been available to the Crouch End for People. I think, I would say, all the information that's required is provided to the panel, the advisory panel, so everything is there for everyone to see and that's basically what, how.
Can I, can I just, can I just ask Charles just a question of just clarification? The way in which you've arrived at the £15 million figure, is that broken down so people can actually see that and inspect it and see whether they agree with that £15 million or not?
Well, if it's not broken down, then I will make sure that it is.
Yeah, okay. Absolutely. I'll do that, so, right, okay, thanks, thanks for, thank you, thanks, thanks for, did I, we promise we will, we will call you, I promise. Sheila.
Hi, my name's Sheila Cavanagh. I'm the Crouch End for People representative on the advisory panel. When we went to the first meeting, I asked whether we could be told precisely how many reports have been prepared by Donaldsons and Baxter's, including those that we're not allowed to see. This is an answer to the suggested by councillor Agi that the books are open, that they're not only not open, we can't even see the front covers. There are seven reports, the Zidonson's initial feasibility report, we're not allowed to see that. The Zidonson's viability calculations, we're not allowed to see those. The Zidonson's updated feasibility report, we're not allowed to see that. We've been allowed to see an abridged feasibility report, a draft development brief and the management options. So I really don't think that it's fair to say that the books are open in that case.
Thanks, thanks very much indeed. Yeah, there was a, right, yeah, the two people, three, let's do three, gentleman back the third row and then just back there and back there and then we'll go, we'll go right back as well.
Right, thank you. Right, I'm Brian Doherty. I've lived in this area long enough to remember orchestral concerts in that hall. So it can be done. Now, there's three points I'd like to make. As a former chair of Haringey, Hornsey Library Campaign, I'd like to be assured that the library is safe and that the library is not going to be shoved into the basement of the town hall, as someone claimed to me. Councillor Agi did mention schools or possible school in passing, I'd like to hear more about that. And in relation to the question of funding, well, Collage Arts, otherwise known as Haringey Arts Council, have the expertise to get funding from heritage funding, lottery funding, European funding. They have been extremely successful in gathering arts funding for their activities, so they can certainly do it for this project. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks Brian. Just to say, there certainly has been discussion with Haringey Arts Council and I absolutely agree with you, if you look at Chocolate Factory and indeed Chocolate Factory Two, because it's been so successful, there's a lot of expertise, not, you know, not that far away as well. Yeah, gentleman there. Thanks Amit.
Sorry, I don't need your mic.
No, can we have it, just, oh, it's just there.
Don't need it. Can you hear me? Excellent. Without an eight to nine for assistance, I was just intrigued as to why after 15 years all of a sudden the town hall seems to be burning at home in the council's pocket. Is this something that's been generated by the sort of, do you run ground? Are you appreciating this, therefore it's costing you money there, or it's under the treacherous rules, you've got to do something with it? Or, you know, why are we suddenly holding crisis meetings after 15 years? That's what I'm asking. And secondly, I guess these reports, we can't say that will be covered under the Short and Intervent Freedom of Maintenance Act, so if we can ask it, it's early, okay?
It's always good to hear a plug for resource accounting, I think. Yeah, it's a good one. Okay, yeah, gentleman there.
I'd just like to support Sheila and her comments about the lack of figures that the council have produced. In the Baxter's report, there are three feasibility studies in the back, all of which are different. And the Donaldson's report has yet another study, was different to all the other three. So how these all relate to the £15 million is a bit of a mystery and I think it's important to clarify the way that Donaldson's report relates to the ones in the Baxter's report and the effects that has on the rest of the development. My other point is probably fairly unpopular, but in general terms, I think having fairly high density housing in urban centres is actually quite a good thing. It means that people can either walk to work or if there's good transport, they can take public transport to work. It also means they can shop locally, so they don't have to drive over to Bluewater. And I think in many ways, it's actually a very positive thing if the car parking problem can be resolved. So I feel that if there was some kind of small units on the side... So I feel that if there was some kind of small units on the site, the problem at the moment is that we have a desperate shortage of housing. One of the ways to solve it is to build more housing. And my daughter at the moment lives in a shoebox over by Seven Sisters. You know, there's no way she could possibly afford to buy a house in Crouch End. And, you know, I feel that increasing the housing provision, if it's done in the right way, in the right place, with the right transport links, is a positive thing, not a negative thing. And it does seem to be that we should see this in balance with the car parking question, and not just assume blankly that housing is bad, car parking is good.
Thank you very much. There was, I think there was a gentleman, there was one gentleman at the back there, and then I'm going to go over to this side, because nobody's spoken from this side yet, and of course then we'll come back again. Just somebody at the back there? There's a lot of coverage in the media about the fact that the infrastructure in Crouch End can't cope with the number of inhabitants. There aren't enough school places, and healthcare provision is under what it should be. Neither of these schemes seem to address those two priorities for the local population. Thank you very much. Can we go over here? Please?
I think I made a mistake.
Amit, was it, right, can we, yeah, just hear a gentleman down there, and we'll go over here.
Yes, I'm a local resident here in Crouch End. I'm just wondering why the council have sort of set off along this path, talking with developers, without any clear vision of where they want to get to. Is there not a middle ground where you can get together with the local people and achieve a vision of what people want, and then you figure out how we get there? Why not hold a competition, for instance, to generate ideas of how you might develop the site? It's not just a case of restoring, bringing it to its former glory with little, you know, local friendly users, or the other extreme, which is a great big block of flats at the back. There's somewhere in between.
Thank you very much indeed. We're just going to go over here now. Thanks very much. Amit. Lady very patient, who's had her hat up for a long time, and somebody behind her.
Hello, my name's Andy Belisario. I'm a resident in Crouch End and have been for 28 years. No, not that long. About getting on for that. And I'm also a teacher in one of the local schools. I just want to bring up the issue of the car parking and the transport. Now, transport is an issue. It's been an issue for a long time. Cars are an issue. And there's no doubt that it might be a problem, or it will be a problem, the amount of transport that might, that will, that the plans will bring in. That's going to be a problem. But at least Crouch End for People's plans have allowed car parking. The councils have had none. With the housing and with a conference centre, now, a conference centre is going to encourage people to bring cars. And it's a conference centre that's not in the centre of London. People are going to be bringing their cars, parking in the local streets. For the local community, you're going to have even more difficulty parking outside your home. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Some gentlemen just behind. Right, lovely, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Paul Gunn. I'm a resident here as well for the last 15 years. I just had two points. One was on the practicalities of building into, given modern engineering techniques, to build an underground car park, which doesn't increase the footprint of whatever development happens at the town hall centre, and allowing for those cars to come in. I know the traffic itself would be increased, but perhaps, I mean, we can probably look at a congestion charge for that, which would benefit the, fund the town hall itself. But to actually then put the cars underground, perhaps. And the second more, sort of, another issue regarding the use of the centre perhaps as a conference centre, just to take into consideration, something that I have become aware of recently, is that there may be a change, and I'd like to know what the panel knows about this, a change of use in the centre at the top of the hill, Crouch End Hill, the TUC Centre, which seems to be losing its financial support from the TUC itself, which I have heard maybe about to undergo, or in some medium term, about to undergo some kind of change there. That is a very large site. It has currently got conference facilities. It also, I believe, has some kind of restriction in terms of its use as an education facility in Crouch End. And I wonder if Crouch End for People and the Haringey Council are including the future development of that site in their, in their plans for the town hall centre, because it is something which is, I believe, somewhat imminent.
Thanks very much. On the, thanks for raising it about the, about the TUC Centre. As I understand it, no decision has yet been made, but I'm very pleased that you've raised it, because, I'm very pleased that you've raised the TUC Centre, because it's a very, it's a very live issue. Obviously, it's up to the TUC what decides to do with that building. And I understand, you know, that there are various things that they're considering at the moment, but I'm very pleased that you've raised it. Just to tell you what we're going to do, five to 10, what I'd quite like to see is to call Stephen Moore-Pergo back again, as we come, as we come, we come to the close, because what we're going to do is to look at, to look at a petition. And what I'd really like to do in the next sort of seven minutes or so, is to take as many people as possible. So the quicker, I'm so sorry, towards the end of the evening, it gets quicker and quicker, but the quicker the points that you can make, the more we can get in. Jo, yes.
My name's Jo. I've lived here for 20 years, and for the past three or four, I've been campaigning for a farmer's market outside the town hall. I don't want to change the subject, I just want to tell you that that campaign is still on. We've got planning permission, and we're now negotiating with bureaucrats for a licence. And there's no reason why that shouldn't start before all this other stuff is resolved, and might even help it, because it would bring people into that piazza, discussing it, noticing the building, et cetera.
Thanks very much, Jo. Gentleman next to Sheila. This is going to be a real competition, how quickly he can do this.
Well, sorry, Jacob O'Callaghan. I'm not a councillor. I know a few councillors, but they're in rehab. But I'm the conservation officer of Hornsey Historic Society.
As they say, councillors are very good friends of mine.
Yeah, yeah. And so we have been invited to the advisory panel. Thank you very much. But I must apologize that we didn't get there, because unfortunately, you sent the invite to our conservation officer, who is conservation officer 30 years ago. So, but I will try and get to the next one, honestly. One of the things I saw in the papers was a comment from some of the consultants, and they said, oh, no, you can't have a trust, because there aren't, in Crouch End, sufficient quality of trustees. Well, God, I mean, you know, just look at the people here tonight, and they've organised this. And I think, you know, I've been to meetings of other trusts, and I think they're doing pretty well. Just one brief point on the Ali-Pali comparison. I'm afraid that the reason why the Ali-Pali isn't doing very well is because it's structured so that it's, the sole trustee of Ali-Pali is the council. What we need is something completely different. We want, I think what is needed is a trust which is, yes, working with the council, but separate with them, because unfortunately, I find that the council always wants to control things. Now, lastly, I would make one, I hope, practical suggestion. There's been a bit of ribaldry on the local Hornsey online site about the two groups, the Crouch End for People, and it's a Monty Pythonish joke, and then the People for Crouch End for Judea, which is Dave's lot. Well, you know, and of course, David Pontius Pilate Warwick, and the Romans up in the Suic Centre with bigger stickers, all, you know, laughing their heads off, saying, oh, they can't get together. Well, I would like to invite both parties together to a meeting at Hornsey Historic Society, David and the representative of the other, to try and bang their heads together, because let's all do it together.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentleman next to Sheila, yeah.
Thank you. I've been mentioned so many times, I thought I had to say something. I'm Ian Lush from the Architectural Heritage Fund, and my colleague Kate Graham is here. What I just want to say, it's not for me to comment on the details of this whole thing, not yet. What I do want to say is about trusts. Now, our organisation exists to fund trusts, to restore historic buildings, but more to the point, to put them back into beneficial reuses. There are plenty of examples around the country of trusts working happily in partnership with local authorities to save historic buildings. What it essentially needs is firstly, a strong level of community involvement; secondly, some local expertise, but also the ability to bring in expertise, and there's plenty of it around, and clearly this area isn't lacking in it; but thirdly, a will to find a partnership solution. And that's what I would urge on you. You will have seen on the screen a very brief flash of the logo of the BBC's Restoration series. Now, you may remember the winner of that was an ex-council building, Victoria Baths, which had been shut, and then a friends group had got together. And I have to say, working with the council, have put together a viable proposal for bringing it back into use, so much so that it actually won the first series of restoration, and will be receiving three and a half million pounds as a result. Now, all this goes to show is that trusts can work, but they have to work in cooperation with the local community, they have to have a viable plan, and I think you've got plans to look at at the end of this evening, but they have to also have strong local will, and clearly, that's something you're working towards now. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ian. Now, what I'm going, what I'm going to do, it means that we will go very, very slightly after 10, but if you're, but if you're all agreed, I'm going to just try and call a few last, last people, so we do as much, but if you could keep it to a couple of lines, I'd be very grateful. Lady there, who's been incredibly patient.
Thank you. My name is Mary Prior. I've lived here 30 years, and I've worked in the borough. And I think an important point that I would want to raise is that the council has, over a period of those years, shown shortsightedness, and shortsightedness in major projects that they've had to pay greatly for. And the lady raised station school, secondary school, as being a situation where it was knocked down. The junior school at the bottom of the hill, there was a plea to make it at least a three-form entry, and they insisted on it being a one-form entry school, and couldn't be extended. There's been a number of issues through the council's history where shortsightedness in the initial stages has meant expenditure or disposal at a later stage, and I plead that this doesn't happen again.
Thanks very much indeed. Okay, well, last, 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 last three now. Gentleman here, somebody there, there was somebody over there.
My name's Tony Westbrook, local resident, and I've been working with Crouch End for People on the, on some of the plans. The point I'd like to make, though, is we've got a very, very good example of a trust working in the benefit of local people here in Crouch End. The Shepherd's Cot Trust has maintained playing fields in Shepherd's Cot for over 150 years, and the council aren't involved in that trust at all. And that has done a fantastic job of maintaining some public facilities for the benefit of the community, and I would wholly commend a trust in this instance.
Thank you very much. The last two over. Yes, just there. Please, thanks. And just, there was a lady on the end here, and I'm afraid that will have to be.
Hi, my name is Jamie, Jamie Wag. I've been a resident in Crouch End for a long, long time. And we've been talking about trusts, and Haringey's dislike of trusts, and that they want us to trust them. We've heard about the Shepherd's Cot Trust. I've recently read in the paper that Haringey has given planning permission for some houses built on tennis courts in the Shepherd's Cot Trust area. I find it very difficult. What I would like tonight is reassurance from the council, that they will actually, I visited the town hall recently, a few weeks ago, and I would like reassurance from the council that they would leave the town hall as it was three weeks ago when I saw it, because I want you lot, I want everybody who goes there on the up and down, I want everybody to go on the up and down, and I want them to see the state that that building is in. I want to see what they've done, what we, they asked us for trust. It would have taken a tar-paulin or a man with a pot of bloody bitumen to seal that roof off, and there's now, the damage is absolutely disgusting, and I think, I think whoever should be responsible should be actually indicted for this. This is absolutely criminal.
Yeah, lady there. Just sort of layer, Amit, sorry.
My name's Laura Phillips. I was involved in the Reverend Dele's proposal for the town hall, and that, we kind of stepped back from that a couple of years ago, I think it was the summer of 2002. That's the last time we did any work on it. And at that time, this 15 million figure for repairing the town hall was certainly not the one that was being bandied around in our discussions. It was a much smaller figure, it was below 5 million, I wanted to make that point.
Thank you very much. Stephen, I'm so sorry, but I know we're losing a little bit of people, and I just wanted to do that. Stephen.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I shall be brief. In conclusion, it's evident that there are two possible futures for our town hall. I sincerely hope that the future we finally see is going to be the one which supports the Crouch End for People Trust. When I was asked to close this meeting tonight, I thought I would remind everybody of the original mandate, how we wanted to see the town hall trust put back into culture and community use, the need to regenerate the piazza, the need for car parking space, not only for this project, but also for our local independent shops. I'm surprised nobody's even mentioned CBZ here, and I'm not going to start tonight. But then I decided I should not close this meeting tonight, I decided you should. And you should, because you're all members of the community who have a similar passionate interest in this, in a positive outcome here. We have had fantastic support. Oh, I've lost my, are you doing this? Or am I doing it?
Amit can do anything.
Oh, the bottom one. You sure?
Not that one.
No, not that one. That one. There you go. Oh, yes, that's it. Yeah, you're wrong. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Time is running out. Which way around does this go here? Oh, here we go. That's my name. I know where I am now. Right, we have had absolutely fantastic support. No, I'm lost again. I could give up on this. We've had fantastic support from everybody here. Last Saturday, we had nearly 1,000 people sign our petition outside the town hall, and the spirit was absolutely electric. It was fantastic. On a personal note, I think for everybody here, the campaign has really highlighted that the town hall has become a vehicle for the community to express support for our vision and for our mandate, and that overdevelopment is damaging Crouch End. I want the council in particular, and everyone in general, please, just to share a few snippets of the emails of support that you have already sent in to the council.
The proposals of the Crouch End for People Group are very much in tune with what the people want. I remember the theatre as a child. I used to play in school concerts there, and I would love my children to have the same opportunity. Where else in the whole of London would it be more likely to succeed financially? Residents don't want Crouch End to become just a dormitory for the city. I realise that the financial gain for the council would be immediate in selling off this unique property. But I wish that the council would visualise the long term. The fundamental fabric of Crouch End society, quality of life and commerce, will be enormously enhanced by a realisation of the proposals put forward by the Crouch End for People Group. It is unthinkable, totally unethical, and in no way in the interests of the community to add to the housing in the area without increasing capacity in other areas such as schools. If housing is increased, so much must school capacity, to suggest doing one without the other is a scandal. I feel the last thing Crouch End needs is yet more flats. It doesn't seem to have the infrastructure to support any more redevelopment.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, time is running out, not only tonight, but also for the town hall project. Before I do anything else, I just want to say thanks again to the Reverend Dele, and to the staff here, and to Christchurch, because they are so supportive, and many, many thanks wherever you are. Crouch End cannot afford to be built on piecemeal. It needs an approach which looks at the whole picture, and which starts right at the heart, with the town hall itself. I'm now going to ask Barbara Roach to call for a show of hands on the following mandate. It's a petition we've got here, we've asked you, we've asked you to sign it already, and we'll ask you to sign it when you go out. to sign it when you go out. The petition says, "We, the undersigned, support the Crouch End for People mandate to turn the town hall into a cultural and community centre, to open the town hall car parks as play and display parking facility, and to reclaim the town hall piazza. And we ask that Haringey Council work cooperatively with Crouch End for People regarding the handover of the site to the Hornsey Town Hall Trust for the benefit of the community."
Thank you very much. Stephen, can I see a show of hands of those people who are in favour, please? Thank you very much. Those against? Right, so one? I think I can declare that overwhelmingly carried, Stephen.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Thank you all very much. The fate of the town hall really does depend on the actions you now take. As we've heard time and again, if we have persuaded you of our feeling about this campaign, it's up to you to persuade the executive. It's really important that you do this. Fill in the leaflets on the seats, and please hand them in on the way out. If you'd like to become more involved in the campaign, please speak to one of our team before you leave. If you do nothing else this long weekend, please, please send a letter or an email to the councillors, I'm sure Judy Backs and everybody else is getting fed up with the number of emails coming in, but I think it's really important, it gets a message direct from you to the councillors. Tell everybody who's not been here tonight about the campaign, ask them to get involved. And finally, don't forget to come to the party and the piazza, for which I'm sure we're going to be granted a licence now by the councillor Adji. No, we're not quoting you, we're just asking you to help. There should be licensing permitted, live music, no, there will be, live music, children's entertainment, and of course, this chance to see inside the town hall itself. The council's going to start guided tours from about 11 o'clock in the morning. So, together, I think we can make Hornsey Town Hall the heart and soul of our area, because it is our town hall, and we want it back. Many thanks.
Right, Stephen, thank you very much. Just... Thanks, thanks very much, Stephen. Just before you go, this one, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you'd like a copy of this, please pick one up on the way out, and if you are so inclined, we'd love to get some contributions from you for our fighting fund.
Right. Right, thank you very much.
Sally and Rachel, the two...